I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Here.
So Member Dunaway.
Present.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Tracus.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of December 8th, 2020?
So ordered.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The December 8th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move on to communications.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Second District.
Receive and file. So ordered.
Item number two, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, Sixth District.
Receive, file, county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number one, Third District.
Receive, file, and the street be accepted for maintenance as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two, Seventh District.
Refer to the county counselor, the Department of Planning, the Department of Revenue, the Assessor's Office, and the Board of Election Commissioners.
So ordered.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five, all districts.
Receive, file, and the reappointment be approved as requested.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second. Gray.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine, Second District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business. And that will be the order.
Item number 10, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second, Days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and hold on the order of business.
And that will be the order.
Item number 12, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 13.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Motion through item number 15, and that will be the order.
Item number 16, Third District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
And that will be the order.
Item number 17, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 18, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 19, First District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 20.
This pertains to an appointment of Mr. Richard E. Banks to the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners. The Justice Health and Welfare Committee did convene today, and that committee is chaired by Vice Chairwoman Gray, and the committee did make a unanimous recommendation to go ahead and approve this appointment. So with that, I will make a motion to receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
Second, Days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, Fourth District.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, Sixth and Second Districts.
Receive, file, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, Sixth District.
Receive, file, and refer to the Ethics Committee.
So ordered.
Item number four, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county counselor.
So ordered.
And same motion for item number five. Sorry.
So, so ordered.
Got it. Thank you. Item number six, Seventh District.
Receive, file, and refer to the county executive.
So ordered. We will now move to the Report of the County Executive.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. Yesterday, healthcare workers here and across the country began receiving the coronavirus vaccine, beginning of the most ambitious vaccination campaign in American history. The arrival of the vaccine is a beacon of hope at the end of a very challenging year. The first batch of vaccines is the initial step towards the goal of inoculating enough people to halt the spread of the virus that has now killed more than 300,000 Americans, including nearly 1,200 St. Louis County residents. The speed in which this vaccine was developed and approved showcases the immense talent we have among our scientists who have forged extraordinary relationships and cooperation to get us to this point. Despite this incredible pace, we know it will be well into spring before enough people have been vaccinated to stop the spread of this deadly virus. We do not yet know in St. Louis County exactly when we will have doses that our Department of Public Health will begin giving to the nurses and other healthcare workers in our clinics, but we stand ready to work as quickly and as safely as possible to get the vaccine to our public health employees and to the thousands of clients the department serves. We continue working with the state, whose task was managing the vaccine rollout. Our healthcare workers have been heroes during this pandemic, and seeing frontline workers getting the first shots of the vaccine was widely cheered in our country. Vaccine distribution process is going to take time. Once the first round of vaccines is given to healthcare workers in nursing homes, the next round goes to first responders, teachers, childcare providers, and other essential workers. There is no timeline on this yet, and it is dependent on how many doses the state has given and distributes to vaccine providers across Missouri. We've come a long way, but this journey is far from over. We put in place aggressive measures in St. Louis County, including one of the first stay-at-home orders in the country back in March. As the largest county in the state, and with the first recorded case in Missouri, we moved swiftly to slow the spread. Throughout the pandemic, we've had to have difficult decisions, all with the health and safety of residents in mind. Lack of a federal response and no uniform response across the state left us to do what we had to do to protect our residents. Four weeks ago, we put into place a new safer-at-home order. Our hospitals were stressed then and remain stressed now. The number of cases and hospitalization remains too great. A month ago, I said we would keep close tabs on the data, and we have. There is simply too much of the virus in our community to lift this public health protocol. For the next two weeks, our Public Health Department will continue to work closely with the Pandemic Task Force. While the numbers from our hospital systems are no longer at record levels, they remain way too high to consider removing any protocols that could jeopardize lives and result in a devastating setback to the efforts of our community. So please stay home unless you must leave for work, school, or medical appointment. We strongly urge older adults to have groceries and prescriptions delivered, and always wear a mask when not in your home. Limit gatherings to 10 or less, including those in your home. And support our restaurants with pickup, drive-through, or delivery. Indoor dining will remain closed in St. Louis County. Our Health Department is working with restaurants to find a path forward to open indoor dining safely, and many restaurants have reached out, offering to help. Thank you for your ideas and your efforts to help us be a better, safer community. And once again, I plead with the federal government to come together for the better good of the whole country and approve a stimulus package to help our families, our businesses, our communities make it through these next few months. We need help from the federal government. We need a statewide mask mandate. We need in our community universal compliance with all our public health orders. The continued spread of the virus is the direct result of some people not doing what is best for everyone. Please do what is right. The virus is raging, and it will not stop just because the vaccine is on its way. That's all for now. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Page. We will now move to Report of Special Committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will keep my remarks relatively brief this week. In last week's oversight meeting, we heard from one of the Directors of Public Health for St. Louis County and chief officers from the region's four major hospital systems who make up the St. Louis Pandemic Task Force. It was a sobering two and a half hours, hearing about the effect COVID is having on our hospitals and the people who work there, and emergency services, and the impact overcrowded hospitals have on their ability to respond to emergencies. There are over 100 extra sick people in our hospitals every day. Some are the sickest patients some have ever seen. Over a normal day in a hospital a year ago or a year before that, 100 more. This disease came with no playbook, so for nine, 10 months, our nurses and doctors and healthcare workers have had to learn on the job, with the pace of hospital and ICU admissions and community spread rarely slowing to give these heroes a break. We've converted maternity wards and cath labs into ICU units. Some ICU units have even doubled up patients in one room. There are times ambulances are lined up 20 at a time, waiting for a bed to open to move a patient into the hospital. Speaking of emergency services, 55 of our area EMTs are in quarantine. Routine wait times in ambulances at hospitals runs five to six hours, and some emergencies are having to be routed outside of St. Louis because there just isn't a place for them in our hospitals. When I think that that could be me or my family stuck in an emergency with nowhere to go, it makes it feel a little more personal. Our nurses are dealing with end-of-life support on a weekly basis that used to be maybe a few times a year. Patients are dying in our hospitals at unprecedented numbers, unlike anything most hospital staffs have ever seen. Our nurses are reporting trouble sleeping and struggling to deal with the emotional toll of the sickness and death all around them, all while putting their own lives and the lives of their families at risk to keep caring for the sick and dying. The PTSD our healthcare workers are suffering will last long beyond this pandemic, a pandemic that's sure to last for many more months. With resources stretched as thin as they are and a need to administer not one, but two doses of a vaccine to our most vulnerable before we can start reopening our world, I think that it's time that we put away the fight, mask up, stack up those Swiss cheese slices, and listen to our healthcare professionals when they tell us that this is a serious emergency with serious downstream effects on the delivery of emergency and healthcare services. And we need to do everything we can to keep our hospitals from getting even more crowded as we finish out this wave of the virus. We really do keep all of us safer when we stay home. And with that, Madam Chair, I will move to hold the report on the order of business.
So ordered. We will now move to public forum. We have nine registered speakers this evening. As a reminder, we have changed our public forum rules over the past few weeks. I think this is our third week of this new procedure, where people are joining us virtually to deliver their public comment. There is instructions on our website with our notice about how you participate in our virtual public forum. Speakers who are interested in participating need to sign up between 6:00 PM and 6:28 PM. No earlier and no later. When your name is announced, listen for the clerk to ask you to begin speaking, and then state your first and last name and zip code for the record. You have three minutes, and the clerk will inform you when your three minutes is up. We do encourage you to turn your camera on. We think it makes for a more meaningful dialogue or opportunity to communicate well. But if you are unable to do that, we understand that as well. So with that, we will, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Madam Chair. Thank you. I just have a question here. There was a comment sent, and I know that on last week, we had two people that were not able to, for some technical reason, were not able to get on and speak with us. But I also see here where we are saying that no longer accepted public comments on the email. Is that blanket, or does that apply to those who have not been able to get on as well?
So as we discussed when we decided to change this policy, we are no longer accepting email submissions. The only exception we will make for that is if someone has technical difficulties, our council staff will reach out to that person within the next 24 hours, and they will have an opportunity to submit their comment then.
I did want to make that clarification, but I did not see that exclusion in Diane's response. I believe this is to Mr. Sullivan. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that if you do have technical difficulties, that your comments will be included in the next journal, once submitted. Is that correct?
That is correct.
After they have registered.
Yes.
After they have registered.
After they have registered.
I believe that was the case last week. We had two people register. They were not able to get in. That's why I need clarification on that.
And may I just further say that they are given 24 hours to submit their comments after the meeting.
That's fine.
Mr. Sullivan submitted his comments today for today's meeting.
I see. I just wanted to make sure, but because that was not explained in your email, I just want clarification. So we're good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Our first speaker this evening is Reggie Jones, followed by Shannon Robinson. Hi, Mr. Jones.
Hello. How's everybody doing?
Please proceed.
Okay. Just got a quick statement. As the mayor of Delaware, I can tell you that this pandemic has hit my community and our community very hard. It's the worst thing I've ever seen since I've become mayor. We've lost people we love. We've lost jobs. We've lost homes, and we've lost time. And every day, the people in my community face life-or-death risks just by showing up to the jobs each and every day like I do. I speak for all those people, and I can sit, I can't sit by without explaining to all of you why I'm so concerned and disappointed about different efforts to get rid of public health orders that are keeping us safe. There's been a lot of focus on the economy, and make no mistake, the people I represent are getting really hard by the economy. I've talked to a business owner today in my community. That pain is real, and we need to do something about it. But the answer isn't to try to overturn the public health protocols the doctors say we need. Just because we wish we didn't need them, the answer isn't to pretend that the other states and other cities aren't closing down dining rooms and stores and even schools as taking place in New York now. And the answer certainly isn't to take action week after week and undo actions that make people in our community question the Department of Public Health, because some leaders, they will cause our leaders that constituents to follow. Now, is the time for us and you to lead. You know that we can't get our economy back on track until we get rid of this virus. Fighting public health protocols just means the virus stays in our community even longer, killing and hurting more people and delaying our recovery. And with that, I will hand my comments and hope each and every one of you have a happy holidays and please stay safe.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next is Shannon Robinson, followed by Trish Gunby.
Okay. Once there was a severe virus that became an epidemic, this virus had infected millions of people in the world, yet little was known about it. People were rapidly dying from it. Scientists and doctors were baffled. People were fearful of this virus and extremely prejudiced and hostile toward anyone who was diagnosed with it. If you were diagnosed or lived in a way that would expose you to it, you were stigmatized and isolated. Doctors were rushing with therapeutics and working desperately to find a cure, yet thousands were still dying. Around this time, a boy had been diagnosed with the virus. This diagnosis was a physical and emotional death sentence. The community outcry was harsh. He was not allowed to attend school or play with others. There was flawed evidence to suggest household contact could spread this deadly virus. Through community pressure, this family was isolated, in other words, unofficially and illegally quarantined. He would go to court to sue for his right to attend school. All to swift community backlash, the child was forced to use plastic utensils, a separate bathroom, denied gym class, sports, forced to wear a mask. No one could hug him or come within six feet of him. The family had to move to escape and gain basic civil liberties. Fact, this is a true story, and it happened in 1985, when 13-year-old Ryan White contracted AIDS. HIV and AIDS made its way to the United States around 1960, and by 1981 was an epidemic. AIDS is still in our society, infecting millions and killing tens of thousands each year. However, we have educated ourselves on the dangers and how we live with it. Today, we could never imagine refusing someone with AIDS their civil liberties. COVID is nothing like AIDS. COVID is dangerous, but curable. However, we are isolating our children and killing our communities and their businesses. We are bankrupting our people, setting children back with their education, allowing crime to rise, allowing our neighbors to lose everything that they have worked for. The answers of needing to see a downward trend is not enough for thousands of St. Louisans. Sam Page and the county council, we ask that you initiate a group of local leaders, schools, and business owners to create an opening plan. Millions of St. Louisans need to work. We need to educate our children, and we need to thrive. Show us an opening plan. It is time to unlock the doors. I am reading this on behalf of Elizabeth Schweppi, 63017. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Trish Gunby, followed by Bridget Schmidt.
Good evening. My name is Trish Gunby. I live in 63021. I am the State Representative in the 99th District that includes Manchester, Twin Oaks, Valley Park, and parts of unincorporated St. Louis County. I am here tonight to weigh in on the current orders in place in St. Louis County that are affecting businesses, specifically restaurants and stores. I understand the concern and desperation some business owners are experiencing. I have taken calls and received emails from a handful of these businesses in my district and have done my best to offer assistance or give guidance. I do not want to minimize their circumstances. However, I believe here in the 99th, most of my constituents are supportive of the current St. Louis County orders. I agree with the orders that are in place until we see a drop in COVID-19 cases in hospital admissions. Two weeks ago, when I talked to a constituent, 900 St. Louis County residents had died. Today, that number is 1,175. As nationwide deaths top 302,000, I am reminded of how our country's leadership approached this pandemic. The first impression created is one that is hard to undo. Last spring, people were scared and anxious and had little information, and yet were told that masks were unnecessary, that the virus would go away, that it only affected the elderly. Like a regiment being led into battle, we did not have a leader to protect us from ourselves. So out of necessity, we looked to our governor for direction. Again, the virus was downplayed, and it was suggested that citizens will do the right thing, and local municipalities should handle the fallout. So here we are, and as I reflect, I cannot believe we are in this place, that a five-inch-by-eight-inch piece of cloth has become the stake in the ground, that science is under threat, that somehow one plus one does not equal two. I believe in science and the public health officials who are charged with keeping us safe. And so today, when Mayor Quentin Lucas of Kansas City tweeted that necessary curbs exist on indoor unmasked activities, including dining and drinking, for a reason, and cited yet another study that added to the growing body of evidence as to airborne transmission of the virus, I was further convinced that St. Louis County is doing the right thing. Our leadership has chosen to lead, and I am thankful for that. These orders will not last forever. So I cling to hope and the knowledge that the vaccine is on its way. I will gladly order my dinner curbside and will wear my mask in stores until the virus subsides, and I will remember the two people who just died from COVID-19 in the time it took me to read this statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bridget Schmidt, followed by Jason Moore.
Bridget Schmidt, 63129. Dr. Page, I understand that you and the Health Department fully believe your extended mandates are helping our community. However, on the contrary, I see how they're hurting our community, both mentally, physically, and economically. Suicide has risen. I just lost a friend of mine to it, and he left behind his wife and three children. Physical and mental abuse have risen within the homes. My own neighbors have called the police countless of times on each other during these lockdowns, and they have three young children. It's so sad. Those sick with cancers are not getting the medical help they need because they have extreme fear of contracting the virus. Friends of mine that own restaurants and other businesses are bankrupting. Friends that I personally work with have been furloughed and terminated and can't pay their bills, some of them single moms with children. Children are struggling with virtual learning and are getting behind in their education. A teacher friend said she had no control over who's attending. They would sign in the beginning and then would log off. Plus, they're not completing their assignments. One of them had a 7%. The PTSD these children are suffering is immense and is going to last a lifetime. These are our, this is our future. COVID-19 is a real virus and does kill people. As of today, per statistic, there's been 1.62 million deaths worldwide, but 41.3 million recoveries worldwide. COVID is not killing masses. The Spanish flu, from 1918 to 1920, killed roughly 17 to 15... The Spanish flu, from 1918 to 1920, killed roughly 17 to 50 million people worldwide and eventually died out because of the communal immunity. COVID has not killed near this amount. There was a spike in numbers in the United States in 2015. In the U.S., in 2015, there were 2,712,630 deaths, which there were 86,212 more deaths than in 2014. Why didn't we shut down then? Why didn't we wear masks? Huh? The hospitals were overwhelmed, but yet there were no mandates that year. We, as a society, continued living. There was no fear put out from the media. My daughter was 18 at the time of both her and I became really sick. We developed walking pneumonia, and it took both of us over three months to recover. But yet, no one shut down, no one panicked. Many more people died that year than in 2014 and were sick, yet life continued on. I have many people close to me that have worked for over 30 years and have complained they're understaffed in the hospitals, and they don't have enough beds for the sick. I personally waited in the emergency room for over six hours waiting to be seen in the past. Years ago, my husband had the flu and was rushed to the ER. He collapsed at work and was put on a bed in a hallway, not even in a room, because they were so full during the flu season. Staffing and beds have been issues for years. An alternative solution really needs to be looked at other than shutting down. Continuing with shutdown for our counties is not the answer, especially with the vaccine being distributed. Listen to these highly intelligent epidemiologists who study viruses for a living worldwide, from places such as Harvard, Oxford, and Stanford, plus many more advise a focused protection approach, herd immunity. They say, they advise that those are not compromised, continue living normal lives. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Jason Moore, followed by Joe Durhackey.
Mr. Moore. Hello. Thank you so much, Jason Moore, 63021. I just am going to throw away what I was going to say based on on that previous caller, Bridget. Thank you. My only comment that I have to say as a result is knowing that there's another two weeks that are coming up in front of us, leading up to Christmas, and the lockdowns are going to continue for our restaurant industry. You've just killed off these businesses' ability to make any kind of profit or any kind of, any kind of money over the next couple of weeks leading up to Christmas. Now, I fear, as I'm sure most of the restaurant industry does, how many people are going to be put out of work right at Christmas time? How many will never come back as a result of this, right before Christmas time? What is the data that is backing this up, Dr. Page? We would like to know. We hear these platitudes that it's very bad overall, and we must control the virus, and I'm not disagreeing with that. But where's the data that the restaurants are actually the ones that are spreading the disease at such a massive scale, requiring them to be shut down? It's not there. I can assure you, it's not there. Having said that, what I would like to call out again, as I mentioned last week, is the corruption that is going on in the Sam Page administration in regards to the Western Anesthesiologist LLC or Incorporated and his affiliation as one of the partners in that organization. They have a PAC, apparently, a political PAC, that has, I guess, I don't know, laundered money through his, through fundraising for his, I guess, ascension into the county executive's office. Is there, is there no questions, or is there going to be any kind of questions going on to investigate his affiliation with this and how that money was routed around? To me, that reeks of corruption. Having said this, I really don't have much to say. The previous caller was just exemplary, and I cannot, I cannot speak much better than that. I appreciate everybody's time, everybody's time. Everybody have a blessed Christmas. And I really urge and actually demand that Sam Page resign or that the council actually makes, starts making that question, and that the rest of the county residents start pounding away at the phone lines to the county, demanding answers on this corruption. Thank you so much, and have a blessed holiday season.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joe Durhackey, followed by Lori Carter.
Well, let me just say, I, those previous two callers were a really hard act to follow, and I thank Bridget and Jason both for their comments. I echo them. And I will also say that this virtual process, I do appreciate that we've evolved from council members reading public forum emails to actually allowing us to have our own voice, if not our own video. But you must realize there are many technical challenges in order to be able to be present and be heard in council meetings that many people don't have the time or the technical capacity to be able to do. So I just want to say that. That in itself is a form of censorship. I will move on to my comments. I'm speaking on behalf of Jenny Hogg, 63128. She's a friend of mine from a group of over 12,000 concerned parents. She had to be at a Girl Scout meeting tonight, and so she sent me her comments, and I am simply reading on her behalf. She writes, "Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our comments, and thank you to those council members who have been standing by our side and advocating for us as we voice our concerns. I feel compelled to speak up on behalf of all the restaurant owners in St. Louis County, as well as those who earn a living working in these establishments. County Executive Page has stated that indoor venues where distancing is not maintained and consistent, use of face masks is not possible, e.g., restaurant dining," in parentheses, "has been identified as particularly high-risk." Identified by whom? Where are the data linking the spread of the COVID-19 virus to restaurants in St. Louis County? By extending the safer-at-home order for another two weeks. You've rendered many incapable of providing for their families. It's another two weeks not knowing how they'll pay their bills. What is St. Louis County doing to provide meaningful relief for these business owners and employees to ease their burdens during a particularly stressful time? During your COVID-19 update, you mentioned financial assistance from our federal government on many occasions, but what is your plan to provide aid to restaurant owners and employees now? We cannot hope for a handout from the federal government while you live comfortably on your two salary income.
Madam Chair, that is three comments.
And government that is failing every day. I will skip a couple of sentences and just end with her closing sentence. I feel like a lot of my comments were prefaced by my own personal. So let me just read the last sentence.
Sir, your time is up. Can we proceed to the next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Lori Carter, followed by Josh Share. Ms. Carter? Ms. Carter? Please proceed. Ms. Carter, we don't have a, Ms. Carter, we don't have a good connection with you? You're cutting in and out. We will move on to, we'll move on to Josh Share, followed by Caroline Whacker.
Hi, Diane. Can you hear me?
I can. Please proceed.
Thank you. First, Sam Page, you forgot to thank Mr. President Trump and his administration for their efforts in getting a vaccine out to the public before the end of the year, a feat that the mainstream media and other liberal adversaries thought was impossible. Sam Page, you shut down indoor dining for restaurants, putting a mass amount of people out of work and causing over 40 restaurants to close permanently. Meanwhile, you sit back and collect a paycheck from the county and Mercy Hospital. According to county charter, last I checked, collecting a paycheck outside of the county executive office is illegal. In addition, Western Anesthesiology Associates have a co-ownership in, gets $6 million in federal relief money, then donates $71,000 in political donations, including $5,000 to your reelection efforts. This is absolutely uncalled for. Sounds like they really needed that relief money. Why didn't this money go to restaurant owners whose lives you've destroyed? Why don't you or anyone else on the county council, for that matter, take a pay cut? After all, we're all in this together, right? Sam Page, I'm not sure how you sleep at night, but I'll end with a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. "There is nothing more dangerous than to build a society with a large segment of people in that society who feel that they have no stake in it, who feel that they have nothing to lose. People who have a stake in their society protect that society, but when they don't, they unconsciously want to destroy it." Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Caroline Whacker.
Thank you. Let me be clear before I say this, that I am not in any way anti-mask or pushing anything that is anti-mask. I simply want to know how the government works and to make sure that the procedures that are in place for, for the elected officials to follow are being followed, and I want to understand what's going on. So last week, when I called in, I asked for someone to quickly explain to the residents what a non-binding resolution is, which ones have meaning, which ones don't, and how, as citizens, we're supposed to be able to discern between the ones that are fake and the ones that are real. I reiterated that Resolution 6622 and 6624, dealing with the school resource officers, were both also non-binding resolutions, and they were treated very, very differently, as if their passage was going to have impact on the community. Councilman Fitch and Councilwoman Clancy had a somewhat tense discussion just last week at the end of the meeting over the resolution to be passed dealing with the bargaining agreement between the police. I'm not an expert on this yet, but I do know that it was a tense discussion, and I'm curious as to why those are so important if these resolutions don't actually carry any weight. Finally, at the end of the meeting, when Councilman Fitch asked the county councillor to address this, it was abruptly ended by the chairwoman. I think that it's essential that we understand the policies that are being followed and the procedures that are in place so that we can trust the things that you, as elected officials, are telling us to do. After all, as Councilman Fitch pointed out last week, it was through a resolution that the meeting itself last week ran in a different order. If someone could please clear these things up, I think it would do a lot for the lack of trust that is in the community right now and would help us to understand what policies are being followed and why. And I think that's a very, very, very important thing to have right now to unify us. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That is all the public speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please make sure to reach out to Ms. Carter so you can get her statement to share for the record. We will now proceed to introduction of bills.
Bill number 310, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, "An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute a Contract with the Van Diver Group, Inc. to Provide Branding and Communications Services for the Children's Service Fund." Bill number 311, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, "An Ordnance Declaring the Public Necessity of and Providing for the Replacement of Vorhoff Drive Bridge Number 106, Opening, Widening, and Establishing a Section of Public Road Designated as Vorhoff Drive, Lying Wholly Within Unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, Directing the Acquisition of Real Property Therefore, and Authorizing the County Executive to Execute Contracts, Agreements, and Related Documents, CR-1775." Bill number 312, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, "An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute a Contract with Walter P. Moore and Associates, Inc. to Provide Engineering Design Services Related to St. Louis County Public Works Project Number 20-10-OC, Which Pertains to Repairs of the County Court's Building and the Court's Garage, and Authorizing the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to Execute Necessary Documents and to Revise the Schedule of Work Activities as Necessary." Bill number 313, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, "An Ordnance Authorizing the County Executive to Execute a Cost-Share Agreement with the Missouri Department of Transportation, MoDOT, for Support of St. Louis County Project Number AR/CR-1837, Wherein St. Louis County and MoDOT will jointly complete the study, design, and implementation of safety improvements along various county-maintained roadways, and Authorizing the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works to Execute Necessary Documents." Bill number 314, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis and Dunaway, "An Ordnance Amending Title I, Chapter 110, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended, Division of Law by repealing and reenacting Section 110.040 pertaining to employment or contracting for special counsel." Bill number 315, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, "An Ordnance Amending the St. Louis County Zoning Ordinance by Changing the Boundaries of the C-8 Planned Commercial District and the M-1 Industrial District as Provided herein, PC-1821 Transportation LLC." Bill number 316, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, "An Ordnance Approving the Application and Preliminary Plans as amended for the amended development in the C-8 Planned Commercial District of attractive land, subject to conditions," excuse me, "and amending ordinance number 10,895 as amended by repealing and reenacting Section 2, PC-1920 Amin Al Shikani." Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. Please proceed with perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please. 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill 32 is held.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill 266 is held.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill 267 is held.
Bill number 302, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray.
I move to hold Bill number 302.
Bill number 302 is held.
Bill number 308, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 308.
Second, Green.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 308 is perfected.
Bill number 309, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to perfect Bill number 309.
Move to perfect Bill number three-oh-nine. Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number three-oh-nine is perfected. Uh, moving on to final passage.
Bill number three-twenty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number three-twenty. Bill number three-twenty is held.
Bill number fourteen, introduced by Councilmembers Tracus, Daze, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number, uh, fourteen, please.
Bill fourteen is held.
Bill number seventy-six, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Bill number seventy-six.
Bill number seventy-six is held.
Bill number two-oh-two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number two-oh-two. Bill number two-oh-two is held.
Bill number two-twenty, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number two-twenty.
Bill two-twenty is held.
Bill number two-seventy-four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Oh, okay. Um, Councilman Gray, did you want to have her read the substitute?
Yes.
Please read the substitute.
Yes, ma'am. Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Two-seventy-four, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance approving and adopting the budget for the General Fund for Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-One, appropriating and setting apart out of the unappropriated balance of the General Fund the sum of three hundred and thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty, I'm sorry, three hundred and thirty million nine hundred and eighty-six thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, to be placed to the credit of the respective departments, offices, boards, commissions, agencies, and funds of the St. Louis County Government as provided in the budget for Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-One as amended by this ordinance.
I move to hold substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Two-seventy-four.
Well, should I, should I? Actually, you either offer it for adoption.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's technically nothing to hold yet, Councilwoman Gray. If you want, I, I'm willing to hold this, um, bill from final passage, and we can take it up next week, um, so the council members have time to review what you were proposing in the substitute bill. Madam Chair. Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman Daze.
Yes, I, I believe in, in regards to this, Councilwoman Gray has requested, uh, a hearing, uh, from my committee, and I believe that has been posted, I believe, uh, for next week. I'm not sure. I'm not sure yet, but I do know that she has requested that, so, thank you.
Okay. I, this is the, I had not heard about that, so, um, we will, uh, work with our schedules to make sure that that can happen. And so with that, I will hold Bill Number Two-seventy-four on the final passage order of business.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to Bill Number Two-seventy-five, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-seventy-five.
Second.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye, but inadvertently voted no electronically.
I'll change your vote to aye. Is that correct, Councilwoman?
Correct.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clancy.
On the next bill.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-seventy-five, there are seven ayes.
Um, Bill Number Two-seventy-five is finally passed.
Moving on to Bill Number Two-seventy-six, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-seventy-six.
Discussion?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Daze.
Um, Madam Chair, I, I, um, I have asked on several occasions about the self-insurance, uh, for some of these bills that we have here. I know there is significant, um, um, uh, litigation that is out and pending. Uh, we would just receive some information from the, um, uh, ACC, and, uh, so I, I noticed that, and I did not offer, I will say that initially, I did not offer any kind of amendment to that, but I think that we are going to be severely handicapped if we don't do something about the self-insurance and the lawsuits that are pending with St. Louis County. So in that, I would have suggested, or I did suggest to our budget, a person that perhaps they needed to look into that, uh, but obviously they have not done that, and so we're just going to move on where we are. But I just wanted to be on record as saying that, uh, I have no idea what's coming down the pike. I'm pretty sure that there are going to be more that's coming down the pike, and when that does happen, we will not be in a position where, uh, we'll be able to afford this. And so I just wanted to put that out on the record and, and, and make sure that everyone is aware of that. So I thank you very much for that. Thank you.
All right. Um, I believe we received a second. Can you confirm that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we did.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye. And I saw, I forgot to.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-seventy-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-seventy-six is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-seventy-seven. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-seventy-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-seventy-seven is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-seventy-eight, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-seventy-eight.
Second. Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-seventy-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-seventy-eight is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-seventy-nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-seventy-nine.
Second. I do.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-seventy-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-seventy-nine is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty, there are seven ayes.
Uh, Bill Number Two-eighty is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty-one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-one.
Second. Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Har- Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-one, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-one is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty-two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-two. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-two, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-two is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty-three, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-three, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-three is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty-four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-four. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Thank you. Councilmember, that's okay. Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-four, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-four is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty-five, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-five. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-five, there are, um, pardon me, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-five is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty-six, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-six. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus. Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-six, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-six is finally passed.
Moving on to Bill Number Two-eighty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-seven.
Second. Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy. Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-seven, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-seven is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-eight. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze. Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Tracus, um, I'm sorry, Councilmember Clancy. Now, Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-eight, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-eight is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-eighty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Two-eighty-nine.
Second. Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-eighty-nine, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-eighty-nine is finally passed.
Bill Number Two-ninety, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Two-ninety. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on Bill Number Two-ninety, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number Two-ninety is finally passed. Bill number two ninety is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number two ninety-one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Nay.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-one, there are six eyes and one no.
Uh, bill number two ninety-one is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-two, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number two ninety-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-two, there are seven eyes.
Bill number two ninety-two is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-three, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number two ninety-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-three, there are seven eyes.
Bill number two ninety-three is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-four, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number two ninety-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-four, there are seven eyes.
Bill number two ninety-four is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-five, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number two ninety-five.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-five, there are seven eyes.
Bill number two ninety-five is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-six, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number two ninety-six.
Second, days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-six, there are seven eyes.
Bill number two ninety-six is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-seven, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number two ninety-seven.
Second, days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Two ninety-six failed to pass.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Nay.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-seven, there are six eyes and one no.
Bill number two ninety-seven is finally passed.
Bill number two ninety-eight, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number two ninety-eight.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-eight, we have seven eyes.
Bill number two ninety-eight is finally passed.
That one did not record. Yes, it did, okay. Moving on to bill two ninety-nine, pardon me.
I move for final passage of bill two ninety-nine.
I'm sorry.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number two ninety-nine, there are seven eyes.
Bill number two ninety-nine is finally passed.
Bill number three hundred, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill three hundred.
Second, Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number three hundred, there are seven eyes.
Bill number three hundred is finally passed.
Bill number three oh one, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number three oh one.
Second, Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number three oh one, there are seven eyes.
Bill number three oh one is finally passed.
Bill number three oh three, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of bill number three oh three.
Second. Days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number three oh three, there are seven eyes.
Bill number three oh three is finally passed.
Bill number three oh four, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill three oh four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number three oh four, there are seven eyes.
Bill number three oh four is finally passed.
Bill number three oh five, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number three oh five.
Second, Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number three oh five, there are seven eyes.
Bill number three oh five is finally passed.
Bill number three oh six, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number three oh six.
Second, Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number three oh six, there are seven eyes.
Bill number three oh six is finally passed.
Our final bill this evening is bill number three oh seven, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill three oh seven.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number three oh seven, there are seven eyes.
Bill number three oh seven is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have two resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmembers Walton Gray, Days, Dunaway, Clancy, and Tracus.
Please read the, um, resolution as outlined.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas invasive bush honeysuckle is destroying forest understory by blocking sunlight from other species. And whereas, removal of invasive bush honeysuckle is vital to improving habitat for animals and plants native to our area. And now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows, section one. The council encourages all St. Louis County residents and businesses to refrain from the sale, purchase, exchange, planting and or transporting of invasive bush honeysuckle. To take steps to become educated about appropriate methods to remove the plant if it is growing on their property. And to prioritize planting native plant species on their property. Additionally, the council encourages the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works and the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to communicate to the council any recommendations for legislative action pertaining to addressing the presence of invasive bush honeysuckle in St. Louis County. Further, the council expresses its appreciation to Mr. Bob Dye, fourth council district resident, for his efforts to raise awareness of the detrimental impact of the presence of invasive bush honeysuckle in St. Louis County. Section two, the administrative director shall send certified copies of this resolution to Mr. Bob Dye, the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Director of the Transport- the Director of the Department of Transportation and Public Works.
I move for the adoption of resolution number one.
Second, days.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway. Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven eyes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of resolution number two, I mean, I'm sorry, please read it as outlined.
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas Rowena Ramona Cherry Shelton was born on June second nineteen twenty-nine in Arlington, Tennessee, one of thirteen children of Manuel and Leona Westbrook Cherry. And whereas, the Shelton family moved to St. Louis in nineteen fifty-three, where Rowena embarked upon a nursing career, earning her degree in nursing in nineteen sixty from the St. Mary's School of Nursing. And whereas, Rowena was a skilled and dedicated nurse at St. Mary's Health Center, where she worked until her retirement in nineteen ninety-one. And whereas, Rowena was a woman of great faith and for over fifty years was an active and loyal member of Zion Travelers Missionary Baptist Church. And when she was selected as a life member of the Women's Missionary Union by the Berean Missionary Baptist District Association, she considered it to be the greatest honor of her life. And now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council offers its deepest condolences to the family of Rowena Ramona Cherry Shelton, especially her four surviving children, her surviving brother George, and her fifteen grandchildren, thirty-one great-grandchildren, and nine great-great-grandchildren.
I move for the adoption of resolution number two.
Second, days.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number three oh six, there are seven eyes. on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business. Item number one.
Um, this has been on our agenda for a couple of weeks. This is, um, in regards to several, um, several appointments to various boards and commissions. Um, we are working to have a hearing scheduled to meet the appointments on Monday. So councilmembers, I believe you have an email from my assistant pertaining to getting that scheduled. So I encourage you to respond as soon as you are able to, so we can go ahead and move forward on that. Um, so with that, I will hold this item, same motion through item number two. And that will be the order.
Thank you. Item number three, sixth district.
Please hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
Item number four.
Um, again, this is a board and commission appointment. We will hold it on the order of business pending a hearing to be scheduled for early next week. Um, same motion through item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six, sixth, sixth district.
New liquor license be approved as requested, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to new business. Madam Chair, we have one prepared order this evening. Order number one, in the matter of communications from Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration and Acting Director of Procurement, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
All those in favor?
Second.
Madam Chair, we need
Second. Second from Councilwoman Daze, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order number one is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda this evening. Um, any comments or discussion from the council? I am hearing none. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There are second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Have a great week, everybody. Good night.
You as well. Thank you.